The meeting, Sergeant at Arms, has the front lobby been attended to ensure public access? And are we ready to proceed with this meeting? Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We are ready to begin this evening's board meeting. The school board meeting of February 22nd is now called to order. The time is 6:01. And I'm going to just drop protocols for this evening. We have a guest tonight, a student guest, and I'm going to have him read this bill that I would be reading, because today we really don't have a lot for our students to be reading, so I'm going to share with him this evening. Please.
Prior to the start of this evening's meeting, we have been enjoying music from Norfolk Myers Brass Cornet. This select group of musical students is under the direction of Sarah Johnson and have received superior ratings at the District Solo and Ambassador Festival. If you would like to see more performances by this group, they will be performing live at this year's Lee County Schools Arts Walk on Friday, March 4th. Please give this amazing group of students another round of applause.
At this time, we will take a brief pause so that the performers can clear their area. Thank you so much again, and thank you for being the first ones back after the holidays. We appreciate you. The agenda, five items under academic services, three items under business services, two items under human resources, two items under information systems, and 10 items under operations, and four items under other business. Board members, is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
I'll move to adopt the agenda as printed.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Ms. Vaughn. It has been moved by Ms. Fisher and seconded by Ms. Vaughn. Please record your vote. It's coming up now. And Ms. Roman, I don't believe I'm going to be able to see that, so if you could... Oh, thank you. Yes. Okay, motion passes 7-0. You have to love technology, so sorry about the delays. Ms. Giavanelle will lead us in the invocation, after which Ms. Vaughn will lead us in the presentation colors and the pledge of allegiance. Ms. Giavanelle, please introduce your guest for the invocation.
Yes, please rise. Reverend Russell Howard is the lead pastor of the McGregor Baptist Church. Born in Jacksonville Beach, Florida, he is the middle of three sons of Mr. and Mrs. E.B. Howard, both of whom are still living and healthy. He married his hometown girl, the former Gail White, on October 22nd, 1983, and they are proud parents of two sons. After graduating first in his class at Valdosta State University, now the University of Valdosta, Georgia, in the spring of 1983, Reverend Russell Howard entered the Mid-America Baptist Theological Seminary in Memphis, Tennessee. He graduated seminary school with the Master of Divinity at Christmas time in 1986. For nearly 14 years, he has served as the lead pastor, translating his vision and direction to all staff and lay leadership of the 6,000-member church. Please welcome Reverend Russell Howard.
...together. Lord, we are so grateful for the opportunity to gather and to exercise this responsibility to which you have called this board. My prayer for them, I suppose especially this evening, because here we are, but beyond this evening and all that they aspire to accomplish, that they would first feel the weight of making decisions that impact the lives of nearly 100,000 students with a stated goal, their stated goal, that those students would arrive at their highest potential. That is a magnificently large-scale aspiration. But Lord, may they also see the worth of impacting those lives from the pinnacle of policy to the intimacy of connection as teachers and students establish those mentoring relationships that will impact and be remembered up to a lifetime. And then, Lord, may they preside with wisdom over this magnificent school system. May they understand that all authority on this earth is derived from the ultimate authority of heaven, and may they own that stewardship with both the gravity and the grace that it demands. Lord, I thank you as a citizen of Lee County for those who among us are willing to step into these significant seats, bear this significant weight, accomplish this significant worth, and seek this wisdom. May they know that they are supported by the prayers of your people as they serve. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen. God bless y'all. Thank y'all.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes. Introducing the cadet who is presenting the national colors for our pledge of allegiance tonight is Lieutenant Colonel Mario A. Johnson, Senior Army Instructor from Island Coast High School. Lieutenant Colonel Mario Johnson served 24 years in the Army in numerous assignments and retired as the Professor of Military Science, the ROT Department, I'm sorry, ROTC Department Head for the University of Central Florida. This is Lieutenant Colonel's seventh year as a JROTC instructor in the district. Welcome and thank you for your service.
Presenting the colors tonight is Cadet Bryce Davis, the Cadet Commander of the Island Coast High School General OTC. Cadet Davis played an instrumental part in Island Coast Raider male team winning the district championship and placing third overall in Florida state championship. He is actively involved in all General OTC teams and is currently the commander of the robotics team competing at the district level. Cadet Davis is committed to enlist in the United States Army as an engineer. Please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated.
This evening's student representative is Karsten Branch. Karsten is a senior at Cypress Lake High School. He is actively involved in his school, serving as the vice president of the senior class student government, and has previously participated as part of his school's lacrosse team. He attends all the extracurricular events, including events off-campus. Karsten enjoys volunteering at Gladiola's Food Pantry during his elementary years. He began employment in April 2020 at Cypress Cove Retirement Home and has been employed at the same job for two years. After high school, Karsten plans to complete the police academy and pursue his dreams of becoming a resource officer at Cypress Lake High School through the Lee County Sheriff's Department. Please welcome Karsten. We now have a special 15-minute presentation to the board pursuant to Board Policy 1.11. Welcome, Mr. Roper.
I'm altitudinally challenged.
I'm sorry, Mr. Roper?
Yes.
If you would come up to the front, please. Sorry, Mr. Newlin, because he's presenting, I'd rather him be up here so we can... Thank you. And this will be a 15-minute presentation.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Very good.
Thank you.
Do I wait for the time or...
Yeah.
Okay. My name is Robert Roper. I'm with Operation Millstone. Let me begin by asking a question. Is there a void or lack of supply of good books with literary value that are not objectionable? Books like The Tuttle Twins Kids Book Series, books that teach morality and character building. Now, that was a rhetorical question, because I typed in my Google search engine this morning, "books series that teach good morals." In 8.4 or in .84 seconds, there were 4,330,000 hits. There is no shortage of good books that are available to the school districts. My wife and I and the grandparents read to our children from before they were born and well after they could read on their own. They loved it, and we loved it. We read books like The Secret Three, but we would probably never read a book like Worm Loves Worm, a book about gay marriage, because the content was not appropriate in our home, and we considered that subject would not have been age-appropriate for our children. We read Horton Here's a Who, a great book that builds character, the value of keeping your word, but we would have passed on And Tango Makes Three, a book about two male penguins hatching an egg and raising a little girl penguin, because they were not right for our family. They may be fine for other families, and I stand to protect the rights of those families to read that material to their own children and discuss those sensitive topics in their own home, but these are not books or conversations that are appropriate for all children in the public setting. No one here is advocating banning these books. Putting the power in the hands of the parent to decide is what we want. A book in the hands of an adult can be taught any way the adult chooses. Worm Loves Worm can be taught in one classroom. The teacher could hold up the book and say, "This is the world we live in today. Students, get on with the program." In the very next classroom, another teacher could hold up the same book and say, "This is an example of the evils of our world today." That's the problems with school teaching worldviews. If Ward Cleaver wants to read to his children a book titled E is for Ethics, he does not need the school system correcting him with a book called The Gay B.C.s. All sides should be able to agree that the book in the hands of a parent in the presence of their own children is powerful. It's pure. The same book taught in the classroom can be indoctrination. It can be political. You see, it's not the book that's the problem or missing the whole thing. It's not even the content. It's the venue. These books do not belong in a public school library or classroom. They belong in the hands of a loving and caring parent that knows their child, the maturity of their child, and what that child needs. Operations Millstone's mission is to protect childhood innocence. I think we can all agree that that's not a bad thing. In fact, you already do that. You do not provide a sampling of various types of tobacco products to students so they can be educated on the addictive nature of nicotine. You do not provide samples of the various types of alcohol, beer and wine, to students in order for them to experience it, because they're going to be exposed to it later in life or in college. You don't provide the drugs found on college campuses, crack, meth, marijuana, prescription medications, so that they can prepare for college life. Yet, in the media center, you feel the need to provide a sampling of violence, premeditated murder, teen suicide, material that teaches children to hate themselves based on the color of their skin, incest, masturbation, pedophilia, underage sex, anal and oral sex, cruelty to animals, and sex with animals. You might be tempted to point out that reading about something and actually experiencing it are two different things. On that topic, you would be totally wrong. The consumption of pornography, including written material of an illicit sexual nature, presented to a child in their developmental years, has been scientifically proven to be very harmful. Look it up yourself. Look at the scientific proof from medical professionals, the National Institute for Health, the National Library of Medicine, the American Psychological Association, the list goes on. In fact, you would be hard-pressed to find a legitimate, and I emphasize legitimate, source that would stand behind the introduction of sexual content in the pre-teen or teen years. If a student were to put the words of the contents of some of these books into their assigned laptop or media computer search engine, it would immediately be blocked, and the student may even be visited by law enforcement if he typed in something about killing a teacher. Why would you freely give access to the same material in print to a student that you just blocked on the internet? It makes no sense. For a child up through teen years, reading graphic or sexually explicit material actually rewrites their brain. It rewires it. Did you hear me? That is why we have the best-selling books on the market today called Every Man's Battle: How to Beat Sexual Addictions or Addictions to Pornography. When children are exposed to sexually explicit content, studies prove that they withdraw from their parents. Your basic sexual predator and pedophile, they know this, and they employ this every day. Are the schools contributing to the fact that Florida ranks number three in the nation for trafficking of minors in the sex trade? for trafficking of minors in the sex trade? Sometimes what is presented in the classroom goes far beyond education. Operation Millstone has no desire whatsoever to ban a single book. Let me say that again. We do not advocate for book banning. I think we can agree that not all reading material is appropriate for all ages. We did not accuse you of book banning or censorship when you removed this book, It's Perfectly Normal, written for 10-year-olds. It contained information, content, subject matter, and illustrations that were inappropriate for that age level. By the way, can I bring to your attention that you have the companion book to it? It's not The Stork, but it's written for four-year-olds, and it has pictures of naked people in it and a man and a woman in a bed, written for four-year-olds. This is not censorship on your part or mine when you take action to protect children and parents' rights. One of the desires of Operation Millstone is the freedom of choice. I think we can agree that freedom for a parent to raise their own children is foundational in our nation. True freedom will include good options for both sides, all parents, all students. I think you would agree that all parents, regardless of their political or religious affiliation, have the right to raise their own children in the way that is compatible with their own lifestyles, including directing the school what their child will be reading and what they're taught. Can we agree that the district's Destiny Opped-Out Program is not the solution? The Destiny Program does not even come close to meeting the requirements of the law. By the way, speaking of the law, can we agree that because the law may allow certain content to be taught, does not mean the content is required to be taught by law? The reason the Destiny Program cannot work in its current form is the district does not know what books they have, nor do they know where they're located. On January 11th, I asked five school board members to follow up on books that were clearly inappropriate content. They were in middle schools, ages 10 to 14. To Mrs. Jordan's credit, she was the only one that followed up with me concerning the book title More Happy Than Not. Ms. Jordan, your report uncovered two additional books that my report did not have. Which source is true? It's the same source. Which fact is true? Operation Millstone did a public records request for a book titled The Kite Runner. Previously, I was told there were four copies in two schools. The second time I asked the same question from the same source, I got 24 copies in 15 schools. Which set of facts is true? At the last action meeting, some very brave students faced a giant and read objectional materials directly from the pages of selected books. Immediately after those presentations, a reporter for Wink News was told by an official of the district that those books did not exist in Lee County public schools. Which fact is correct? It's the same source. In the same meeting, the board chair proudly said, "We don't have Fifty Shades of Grey." Not something to brag about. "We don't have I Am Jazz," but you didn't even know that you had the companion book, Being Jazz: My Life as a Transgender Teen, in five middle schools across the county. If a parent cannot know, how can they use the Destiny Program to guard their children? One way would be to make this program work would be for the district to be transparent and list all the books, paper or digital, in the media center or in the classroom on a website in real time for all taxpayers so parents can actually see what books the child has access to. I submit to you, had the district been transparent five or six years ago when we made these original requests, we wouldn't be having this conversation today. Did you know that a number of neighboring school districts right here in southwest Florida have very few of these books? In fact, one district has none. I think it's Glades County. Here's an amazing fact. Education still takes place at those schools, and kids are receiving high school diplomas. Most parents consider their child to be a gift from God. The district, no doubt, can see the value of educating these children, but many overlook that is that outside the family setting, children are a very lucrative commodity. I could show you example after example of toy manufacturers, producers of drinks, cereals, shoe sales, clothing. There's gold in them there hills. The world knows it, but do you? Do you know that Planned Parenthood's new cash cow is providing gender-altering drugs that have to be taken for a lifetime? And by far, their biggest market is age 12-years-old. Kids are business. Do you think the explosion of gender surgery clinics across the nation is because they just want to be nice to kids? No, follow the money. It is political also. Organizations like Human Rights Campaign, Equality Florida, Secus, The Trevor Project, various unions, the list goes on and on. These organizations need children to continue to exist. These are political pacts, not educators. Yet, we have allowed their influence to enter the school and the media centers. I'm just one person. You have 13,000 employees. If I have to point out to you that you have the companion book to I Am Jazz and didn't know it, and that you have the companion book to It's Perfectly Normal and didn't know it, the system is broken. I'm going to quote a good friend of mine that wrote this. "Bookstores pick and choose which books they want to sell. Public libraries pick and choose which books to stock. Publishers pick and choose which books to print. Putting a book in or taking it out of the Lee County school system is no different." There is a difference between choice and censorship. People can write what they want. We have the right to decide whether we want to read it. There's also a difference between liberty and licentiousness. Liberty is the right to do good. Licentiousness is the thought that it's okay to do whatever you want. Taking these books out is defending liberty, plain and simple. If a parent wants their children to read these books, they can do it outside the school system, not in. Members of the community, clergy, parents, local organizations, even children have given public comment and asked you to take action. I have personally heard from teachers, staff, media professionals, all folks that are not particularly thrilled about this. All eyes are on you. I'm asking you to do what more than one district in Florida has done. Quarantine these books immediately until they can be determined to be appropriate. Convene a citizens group that would include not just school district employees but constituents from the community, including various organizations, including those that deal with youth, clergy, parents, concerned citizens. Immediately pass a motion to restrict the reentering of these materials without a proper and timely public advertisement of the intent to put these books back in that were removed. Establish a way to keep the books out to begin with. My prayer is that you do the right thing because it's the right thing, not because you're reacting to public comment either for or against. I want to thank you for the privilege to speak to you on an extended period of time. 15 minutes was not nearly long enough, but I appreciate you bearing with me on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Roper. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. There's no clapping. Thank you.
So, the clapping rule is with regards to public comment. So, when there is clapping during public comment, that's where the rule is...
This is a presentation.
This was a presentation.
The next item on the agenda is public comments. Ms. Dupree Bruno, please address the item of public comments.
Thank you, Madam Chair. School board policy provides the opportunity at this point in the meeting to address the board concerning any matter on this meeting's agenda or any other matter relevant to the operation of the school district. If you completed a public comment card, please put it in the basket provided in the back. If you need a public comment card, they are provided by our staff located in the hallway outside of the boardroom. The rules concerning public comment are posted in and will be made from the microphone in the back of the room. Please be advised that the board will not respond during public comment to remarks made by speakers. Speakers and those attending the meeting are expected to act in a respectful manner. The purpose of public comment is to provide feedback on school district issues. Abusive language is prohibited. In addition, clapping, hissing, and booing, unreasonably loud and/or offensive language, swearing, cursing, or display of temper during the public comment time is prohibited. Speakers who fail to follow proper decorum in the chambers will be ruled out of order. Any speaker continuing with such remarks will be required to relinquish the microphone per Board Policy 1.11 and may be removed from the chambers. There will be one warning, and we ask that you govern yourself accordingly. We will take recesses as necessary if there is not decorum in the chambers. Please remember that it is unlawful in a second-degree misdemeanor to knowingly disrupt or interfere with a school board meeting. Per Board Policy 1.11, the time per speaker is three minutes if there are 20 speakers, two minutes if there are 30 speakers, and one minute if there are 31 speakers or more. The maximum time allotted for public comment is one hour, 60 speakers. You'll find a countdown on the big screen in the front of the room. Once your time has elapsed, the microphone will automatically shut off. Please state your name when you approach the microphone. I will call your names five speakers at a time. Please follow the staff's direction when lining up. Madam Chair, there are 25 speakers that wish to address the board this evening.
Okay, I have 26.
Well, one of them that was listed on here was Mr. Roper with his special presentation, so it's 25.
Thank you. Please make sure you have completed a public comment card if you intend to provide public comment. This card is a public record identifying those who speak and providing contact information for staff for follow-up. The cards are located with staff in here. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the board but did not fill out a comment card? Please raise your hand. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak that did not fill out a card? I'm going to say it one more time. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the board but did not fill out a comment card? See, none. Ms. Dupree Bruno, please proceed.
Thank you. Will the following individuals please line up? Dr. Edward Drass, Shelley Kay, TSC, Sharon McGill, Lynette Lob. Ms. Newlin, is it two people that are lined up?
Two.
Okay. Will the following individuals please line up? Susan Lorraine Margielis, Mary Ellen, and Barbara.
What is the number and the amount of time?
It's going to be three minutes.
What is the number of speakers we have?
25.
I thought above 20. It was two.
No, no, no. It's 2230. I'm sorry. Yeah, 22. Wait a minute.
It's two minutes.
Hold on. Let me look at my cheat sheet. Hold on.
It's two minutes.
Sorry, I did.
It's two minutes.
It's two minutes per speaker. Thank you.
Dr. Edward Drass. I want to thank Pastor Roper for an excellent, comprehensive presentation. He should be speaking for all the ministers in this community on this subject. He is the only one that stepped forward at this point. This material is something that needs to be addressed. I would like to speak regarding one of the issues. A book called The Bluest Eye by Toni Morrison. It has been added to university reading lists for college consumption. It has not received any awards. Page 162. "The confused mixtures of his memories of Pauline, who was a young girl, and the doing of a wild and forbidden thing excited him. An bold of desire ran down his genitals, giving at length and softening the lips of his anus. Surrounding all of this lust was a border of politeness. He wanted to F. her tenderly, but tenderness would not hold. The tightness of her privates was more than he could bear. His soul seemed to slip down in his guts and fly out into her, and the gigantic thrust he made in her provoked the only sound. So, when the child regained consciousness, she was lying on the kitchen floor under a heavy quilt, trying to connect the pain between her legs with the face of her mother looming over her."
Dr. Drass, I'm going to interrupt you for a second. Excuse me, Dr. Drass, I'm going to interrupt you for a second. So, here's the thing. Some of these books are in high schools, so we know those are kids who are going to be 13, 14, 15, 16, 17-year-olds.
This book is in the high schools.
We may have some seven- or eight-year-olds watching this meeting, so I'm going to ask, because and I know they're not reading Blue is Eye, so I'm going to ask you to please be careful with the comments that you're going to be making and understand that we may have younger children who are watching these meetings with their parents, please.
You have the ability to block this if it's inappropriate, and if you block this from their view, what about the students who are consuming these materials? These are all issues we've dealt with. We're talking about mental health and the students. Ask yourself if this contributes to their good mental health and to the reduction in sexual assaults and rapes in this county. Thank you.
My name is Sharon McGill. And since this is Public Schools Week, I thought the first thing I wanted to do and thought it was very important was to thank all the individuals in our district who show up every day and are responsible for providing students with a safe educational environment where they can prosper and grow. Without all of you, public education would not exist. At a briefing today from the Curriculum Committee, they showed specifically two different ways that parents can challenge materials if they want for their child. One was a Destiny Program, and the other is a challenge form that can be filled out by any individual parent or community member to challenge any kind of curriculum of book materials used in a curriculum, in the classroom, or in the library. So, there are options for parental rights, and even Operation Millstone says, "What is objectionable to me may not be to you." And so, it's the parent's responsibility to make that choice for each of their children, not for a special interest group or other parents, to make that decision for every child, all 95,000 of them, in the district. Because whatever your values are, my kids don't need to be indoctrinated with your values either. And by taking books out of the library and not making them available is indoctrination on your part, which is a term that Operation Millstone and other conservative Christians like to use. So, I would just like to say thank you again for the board and all the school employees
Beloved by Toni Morrison.
So, could you please state your name?
Mary Ellen.
Thank you.
Thank you. "They were young and so sick with the absence of women they had taken to calves. Yet, they let the iron-eyed girl be so she could choose in spite of the fact that each one would have beaten the others too much to have her. It took her a year to choose, a long, tough year of thrashing on pallets eaten up with dreams of her, a year of yearning when rape seemed the solitary gift of life. All in their twenties, minus women, effing cows, dreaming of rape, thrashing on pallets, rubbing their thighs, and wanting for the new girl. By the certainty of giving her his sex, Paul D. dropped 25 years from his recent memory. A stair step before him was baby Sugg's replacement, the new girl they dreamed of at night and left cows for at dawn while waiting for her to choose."
So, excuse me. Ma'am, we're going to do this again. If this is something that a seven-year-old can't hear, then I'm going to ask you to please not read it.
Excuse me. A seven-year-old's parent can take him away from the live feed. The jump, thought Paul D., from calf to a girl wasn't all that mighty, not the leap Halle believed it would be. And taking her and corn rather than her quarters a yard away from the cabins of others had lost out was a gesture of tenderness. Halle wanted privacy for her and got public display. Who could miss a ripple in a cornfield on a quake cloudless day? He, 6-0, and both of Paul sat under brother, pouring water from a gourd over their heads, and through ice steaming with well water, they watched the confusion of tassels in the field below.
I'm sorry. We're going to go ahead and take a five-minute recess, and we'll return. And as we are taking that recess... And as we are taking that recess, you are reminded, we will not be speaking on anything pertaining to what the board would be voting on. So please, if you will, we'll be back in five minutes. I'm going to begin our meeting again, and I just want to just make a statement before we start. We know that there may be some children, underage children, perhaps, who are watching. And I just want to put a disclaimer out there for parents to please use their, use your own judgment on what your children are watching, because some of these books are intended for high school. And I just want to make sure that that is understood. So if we could, Ms. Mary Ellen and Ms. Roman, if you will do her time, please.
Page 107, 108. Breakfast? Want some breakfast, nigger? Yes, sir. Hungry, nigger? Yes, sir. Here you go. Occasionally, a kneeling man chose gunshot in his head as the price maybe of taking a bit of foreskin with him to Jesus. Paul D. did not know that then. He was looking at his palsy hands, smelling the guard, listening to his soft grunt so like the doves, as he stood before the man kneeling in mist on his right. Convinced he was next, Paul D. retched, vomiting up nothing at all. An observing guard smashed his shoulder with the rifle, and the engaged one decided to skip the new man for the time being, lest his pants and shoes got soiled.
The Kite Runner by Khalid Hosseini. He handed the cigarette to the guy next to him, made a circle with the thumb and index finger of one hand, poked the middle finger of his other hand through the circle, poked it in and out, in and out. I knew your mother. Did you know that? I knew her real good. I took her from behind by that creek over there. The soldiers laughed. One of them made a squealing sound. I told Hassan to keep walking. What a tight, little, sugary C-U-N-T she had, the soldier was saying, shaking hands with all the others, grinning. Page seventy-five to seventy-six. I want all of you weaklings to do is hold him down. Can you manage that? Wali and Kamal nodded. They looked relieved. Asif knelt behind Hassan, put his hands on Hassan's hips, and lifted his bare buttocks. He kept one hand on Hassan's back and undid his own belt buckle with his free hand. He unzipped his jeans, dropped his underwear. He positioned himself behind Hassan. Hassan didn't struggle. He didn't even whimper. He moved his head slightly, and I caught a glimpse of his face, saw the resignation in it. It was a look I had never seen before. It was a look of the Lamb. I've got thirty seconds left. If you think that this is appropriate even in high school, you got to be crazy. This is for parents to expose their kids to or let them read in a public library? You let this in a public school, even for high school? Oh, my gosh. I can't even read.
Dreaming in Cuban by Christina Garcia.
Could you please state your name?
Lorraine Margulies.
Thank you.
Lourdes's mouth and tongue were like mouths and tongues of a dozen experienced women. Rafino's body ached from the exertions. His joints swelled like an arthritic. He begged his wife for a few nights' peace, but Lourdes's appeals only became more urgent. Her glossy black eyes were more important. Lourdes was reaching through Rafino for something he could not give her. She wasn't sure what. The other soldier held Lourdes's down as his partner took a knife from his holster. Carefully, he sliced Lourdes's riding pants off to her knees and ties them over her mouth. He cut through her blouse without dislodging a single button and slithered bra and panties in two. Then he placed the knife across her belly and raped her. Felicia told him how she'd left high school and answered an ad for International Escorts in the newspaper. A prim woman with bobbed hair and a throaty French accent asked Felicia to remove her shoes and knee socks, then made a note in her calf skin ledger. She asked Felicia to unbutton her blouse. Felicia's nipple tightened as she did so. She knew her breasts were admired by the boys in Santa Teresa del Mar. Finally, Madame Troubo insisted that Felicia remove her skirt and panties. Walk, the Frenchwoman ordered. Felicia felt her ample dimpled behind quake seductively as she moved. Your buttocks are too large for Europe, Madame Troubo told her, but for here, they will do. Eighty. Hugo and Felicia stripped in their room, dissolving easily into one another, and made love against the whitewashed walls. Hugo bit Felicia's breasts and left purplish bands of bruises on her upper thighs.
Next speaker, please.
Thank you.
Tricks by Ellen Hopkins. I totally wanted to pop your cherry. You were my first virgin, and you'll probably be my last, because, sorry, but virgin sex isn't very good. So although I'm a sponsor, some old Viagra stiff, queen hopeful that buying a drink means buying a lay, they were thick as flies. But Paige wants even more. Did you use your mouth? Her eyes lit up. Is she waiting for a blow-by-blow description? I pretended he is and let his hands explore the rounds of breath, move in tighter and tighter orbits, and now fingers circled the hard-centered nubs, raised like it's cold in here. Down my shorts in a single swift motion, he is on me, in me, humiliating me in every way. Next book is Thirteen Reasons Why by Jay Asher. Hannah took off her shirt and let Justin put his hands up her bra. She came over to my table at lunch, whispered the proposition in my ear, and I had a hard-on for the rest of the day. I've had my ass grabbed before. No big deal. Oh, my God, she screamed. He's cramming his dick in his pants. Don't worry, Mrs. Crimson, I thought, no boys in here, no alcohol, no drugs, no fun. Your top three things to do on weekends, which is funny, because whoever designed the list forgot to mention drinking and sex, which would have been the most accurate response for most of our student body. That's all.
Will the following individuals line up, please? Tara Jenner, Ian Rankin, Amy, Keith Olson, Marcia Ellis.
Tara Jenner. I was planning on reading out of the next book and giving you the page numbers and the details. Bluntly, I read these last night, and it was difficult to sleep, because here's one of the things that I looked at. I'm a lawyer from another state. I'm retired. And when I look at the Miller test, which you guys went over sort of vaguely this afternoon, you mentioned three components of that test. And I was totally shocked when I realized that you missed a big component, and that's that the Department of Justice in November of 2021 said that there was actually only a two-pronged test when you're dealing with children, and that the threshold was way lower than it was for adults. I noticed that there were a lot of people in this room that are squeamish about what was read, and I hear the board members squirming up there, and the board attorney and the chairperson holding us hostage here for five minutes at a time, saying, "We need to have a recess because you don't like what's being said at that microphone." Let me tell you something. Parents at home in front of their TV have a lot more control over their children than what they do when those children are sitting in a library, unattended and unsupervised, and have access to this type of material. They can remove their children from their TVs a whole lot easier than they can eliminate access to these books from their children in the school district because they don't know what's in the libraries. And if they don't know what's there, they don't know what to remove their children from or to remove from their access. So I will go on record right now for everyone who follows me. Anyone who's online right now, if you've got minor children in the room or this subject matters a problem, remove your kids now. That's your right.
I'll read from another stellar author. Sloppy Firsts by Megan McCafferty. Scotty is the most self-censoring foul-mouth I know. Like every other jock, he worships Opie and Anthony, the afternoon talk radio duo and misogynistic masterminds behind Whip 'Em Out Wednesdays. Female motorists are encouraged to titty flash any male driver with a wow sign on his car. And guess what's in my pants? A female caller rubs a phone against her most private of areas, and male contestants try to guess whether she's sporting a brillo, a triangle, a Hitler, or a wood floor. Rob's recent claim to fame is that he celebrated an away game victory by persuading a freshman cheerleader to hide under his Seagulls varsity jacket and suck him off in the backseat of the bus. Go. And he says, "I can't think of one way to make it even better." And then he slowly walks over to me, cups my totally zip-free face in his hands, and ever so gently kisses me on the lips. We break away for a brief moment, look each other in the eyes and smile. We start kissing again, but with more passion. Then we rumble onto the gymnastic mat that is conveniently laying on the floor and have the sweetest sexual experience ever to occur within the hallowed halls of Pineville High. Pierre, I've always admired your ability to fill out a pair of tidy whities. And I'll never forget the night I found the night I found the night I found out that you know your way around a quitterus. So you in my wettest, wildest dreams. I felt his mouth on mine. We were kissing. Kissing him didn't make my skin crawl. I liked it.
Next speaker, please.
Hi, I'm Keith Olson. I'm reading also from The Bluest Eye by Toni Morrison. He could have been an active homosexual but lacked the courage. Bestiality... Bestiality did not occur to him, and sodomy was quite out of the question, for it did not experience sustained erections, but could not endure the thought of somebody else's. And besides, the one thing that disgusted him more than entering and caressing a woman was caressing and being caressed by a man. His attentions therefore gradually settled on those humans whose bodies were least offensive, children. He further limited his interest to little girls. Why do I have to die? The little girls, the little girls are the only things I'll miss. Do you know that when I touched their sturdy little tits and bit them just a little, I felt like I was being friendly? I didn't want to kiss their mouths or sleep in the bed with them or take a child bride for my own. Playful, I felt, and friendly, not like the newspapers said, not like the people whispered, and they didn't mind at all, not at all. Remember how so many of them came back? No one of them would ever try to understand, no one would ever try to understand that. If I'd been hurting them, would they have come back? No one would have even tried to understand that. Two of them did come back. I gave them mints, money, and they'd eat ice cream with their legs wide open, and I played with them. It was like a party. There wasn't any filth, and there wasn't any odor, and there wasn't any groaning, just the light, white laughter of the little girls and me. With little girls, it's all clean, good, and friendly. Betsy Vonn said in an earlier meeting that we need good ones.
Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is Amy. We are all here because we care. Thank you to the school board members for your dedicated work for our community, particularly in these politically polarized times. To the parents in the room, I thank you for your interest in public schools and the willingness to be involved at the district level. And to the teachers in the room and in the district, thank you. We know you care. Thank you for starting your day with a smile every day, even when you are feeling unappreciated. Thank you for working through your lunch, and thank you for having to wait hours to go to the bathroom. Thank you for revising tomorrow's plan in your head while you're cooking dinner. Thank you for another evening of grading papers and another weekend doing report cards. We know that you do it because you care. And please, know that you are appreciated. A few weeks ago, a parent had her two children read from books, trying to elicit shock in an attempt to have the books banned from the district. I've thought about this many times and wondered how this mother rationalized using her children as pawns. I can only hope she's discussed the literature with each child and talked about its value in their family and its role in their world. This is one of the many jobs of parents. It is not the job of parents to select books for the schools. A parent's job is to make the best decisions for their child or children. It is the school district's job to make decisions that are best for the children, for all children, because they are, because our community benefits from our students growing up and to be contributing citizens. This is why all taxpayers contribute to the schools and not just parents alone. Schools belong to the public, and decisions should be made by professionals hired by the district using established policies. Schools are important to the staff and to the teachers, administrators, to the parents, the school board, and the community as a whole. We are all here because we care.
Good evening.
Marcia Ellis. Sex determination is the best-known characteristic most influenced by environmental factors. The incubation temperature of eggs fully determines whether or not an alligator hatchling will be male or female. Today, I want to talk about gender fluidity. Intercreant disrupting chemicals are playing havoc with human sexual and reproductive development. Phthalates, dioxins, and others are everywhere. They're found in plastics for food preparation, ingredients in hygiene products, coatings, flame retarders, stain resistance plumbing, flooring, air fresheners, cleaning products, medical equipment, pest, herb, fungicides, and more. In humans, both sexual development and the brain develop primarily during the first trimester of pregnancy. Increasing numbers of children are born with intersex variation, lower infertility and ambiguous genitalia. And this is happening all over the world. EDCs cause a cascade of lifelong effects. For both male and females, changes in the distance from the anus to the genitalia is a biomarker for what chemical influences a fetus has been exposed to and what the future holds for that person's reproductive health and fertility. During pregnancy, female is the default sex unless certain hormones masculinize the reproductive organs in the brain. Yes, masculinize the brain. Behaviorally, EDCs blunt measurable brain-related sex differences, such as language acquisition. Sexuality rides on a spectrum that is at least in part shaped by environmental factors, chiefly chemical exposures in the womb. Bodies of both sexes contain hormones. Please continue to support all children in their full spectrum of sexuality, showing common sense.
Next speaker, please. If you would just, once your time is up, if you could please allow the next speaker to come in. Is there no one back there? I can't see. Ian Rankin, Amy.
He's already been.
Oh, sorry.
Amy's been, it's.
April Hoover.
Yes.
Denise Nystrom, Stephanie Huffman, Jen Wada, Mark Gillespie.
April is, is up next.
Hi, my name's April Hoover. I'm District Three. I would like to read the definition of porn from the American Heritage Dictionary of the English Language. It is lurid or sensational material, often used in combination. I'd like to read from The Kite Runner by Khalid Hosani. Nor do they know that she will give him or her body sparingly and partially. He must enter her surreptitiously, lifting the hem of her nightgown only to her navel. He must rest his weight on his elbows when they make love, ostensibly to avoid hurting her breast, but actually to keep her from having to touch or feel too much of him. While he moves inside her, that she will remain dry between her legs. She hates the clucking sound they make when she is moist. When she senses some spasm about to grip him, she will make rapid movements with her hips, press her fingernails into his back, suck in her breath, and pretend she is having an orgasm. She might wonder again for the sixth hundredth time what it would be like to have that feeling while her husband's P E N I S is inside her. The closest thing to it was the time she was walking down the street and her napkin slipped free of her sanitary belt. It moved gently between her legs as she walked, gently, ever so gently. And then a slight and distinctly delicious sensation collected in her crotch. As the delight grew, she had to stop in the street, hold her thighs together to contain it. That must be what it's like, she thinks, but it never happens. I would just like to say, if anyone remotely thinks this is appropriate for children of any age, we have serious problems. Thank you.
Denise Nystrom. Yes, we all do care. All of us care. And the truth does matter. And I'm going to read what I read earlier today. I've been attending these meetings for almost a year now, and it's a big concern to me that when you look at the makeup of committees, there will be one parent member or one community member. And what that means is that none of our collective voices, the people that are here today on all sides, really get heard or really are able to sit opposite from one another and work through our cultures and our values and our differences to come to some kind of a resolution, what is best for all of our children. And I am requesting the same thing now that I requested earlier today, and that is to convene a committee, a committee that is comprised of at least 50% parent and community members via a lottery system, so that people are not handpicked accordingly, and let us sit down and reach a resolution that works for all of us, because we all care, and the truth matters.
Good evening. Stephanie Huffman. I'm sorry I didn't bring any books to read to you. Next time, I'll check some out from the library for reading time. I'm here to talk about Mr. Grant and say I appreciate him for being here today because I've seen him at board meetings, bringing him, bringing issues about the bathrooms in Cypress Lake High School and showing how the government process actually works. This is the messy process of government where we all yell and saber-rattle and then come together eventually in some sort of consensus that not everybody completely likes. I was an instructor at the Public Service Academy many years ago, and you're going to be an asset to that academy. Thank you very much for, for being present and committing to Lee County. Unfortunately, I, actually, no, I'm going to keep it positive. I was able to watch the school board workshop that took place on February 7th, and I commend the board for your commitment to retaining quality educators. I know that several of the teachers in this district, not several, a large, a large percentage of the teachers in this district have advanced degrees, masters, and PhDs. It's important that we retain these quality teachers that use best practices in their classroom. I wish I could know as much as many of they, they do about how to teach. Unfortunately, I was not that good of a teacher. I was merely a JD teaching about the law. These, the things that parents face today in the class, or that teachers face today in the classrooms with the challenges that are presented before the board, each board meeting should show why it's necessary to retain these quality teachers that we still have in the district. Thank you.
Mark Gillespie, Cape Coral, Florida. To be honest, I'm a little stunned at the way that we've been handling this, this book issue. Yeah, there's the Destiny Program, there's also the Process Paper. The, the issue that is blatant in front of us is the Process Paper is turned in, there is a nameless, faceless group of people who use subjective material to determine whether or not the material in question should stay in the school system. Public is never made aware of that, and because of that, that is why you are being presented tonight with the excerpts from the books. The sad part is, is we're, we're using laws to determine whether or not we can keep the material instead of looking at whether we should keep the material. There is no law that says we can't keep this material. Our insistence as a school system of keeping the material speaks volumes as to the kind of society that we are trying to desperately create. Our motto is personal, passionate, and progressive. So for this evening, I'm going to redefine that. We are showing everyone that we are socially progressive. We are most certainly passionate in exposing our students to as much immorality as possible to shape them as personally as we possibly can.
Will the following individuals please line up? Amanda Evans, Jamie Miller, Joe Phillips, Christie Divigeli, Iris Ramirez, Jaclyn Perez, and Crystal Siskan.
Hello. I want to again thank the board and everyone who's worked through this pandemic to serve our kids, and that's a big number of people. So I want to make a quick reference to the fact that, yes, we do all care about our kids. And if we're going to find solutions, it's a good idea to remember to find something we have in common, and people really all do care about the kids. We really need to work towards solutions. We are capable, we are smart, we are resourceful, but creating more problems, bigger problems, different problems, restating the problem, isn't really working towards solutions. So that's, I'd like to give that a spoon for thought. I did suggest a solution at the last board meeting of an opt-in program where parents would be able to opt into a program where their children would not be able or allowed to check out a book without parental consent. So that's one idea for a solution. So let's try to keep on a solution track would be my, my hope and my plea, so we don't keep creating more solutions, which is what we've been doing here tonight. I want to mention too, a reminder that the board does give comment, and it's at the end of this video, if you're watching the video, it's at the end of public comment. And I think it's really valuable, it's just detached because it's so, so much later, but I would like to encourage people to watch till the end. There are a lot of good answers, responses, and it's really important. I want to bring up one more time what I have before, which is to remember that when we deal with problems, a couple of things. Number one, we're an educational institution. Education is often the answer. Number two, best practice policies are there for a reason. They're based on data, peer review, and expert input. Thank you.
Dr. Iris Ramirez, I chose not to read porn in the presence of a child, a boy, sitting at the dais. It would have been nice if somebody had called his parents during the five-minute breaks to let them know what was going on and what was being implanted in his brain tonight. And based on the previous speaker, yes. Once again, I say, all things should be through the eyes of what's best for the children and their academic achievement. There is no basis, no academic value for any of this sexual training. Children are not sent to public school to have sexual training in various techniques or to be exposed to pedophilia as though that's an okay thing. That's a degeneration of our culture when we're not protecting our children. And I apologize because I, this is not what I was planning on saying tonight. I am pleased that, though, that the board considered this was porn and not appropriate to children. I agree, it's not appropriate to the young boy-child sitting at the front of the dais either. So I'm glad you think that this material is rated X or at best rated R, and that you want to have parents remove their children from the television set. What about the parents who don't know what books their children can pick up in any library or in the back of any schoolroom in Lee County? They don't know what book their child can pick up there. And as for removing the book, and oh yeah, the parents can say, I have to approve every book my child removes. What about every book the child sees in the school that their little friend shows them that they picked up in the school? We have enough garbage and, you know, sexual training out there in the world. We don't need it in the schoolrooms. Once again, consider the academic needs of the children first.
Smoking Joe. Anger, frustration, and shame. As parents, we're angered at how ineffective this current board is. Frustration. We are frustrated that I're pleased for you to protect our children and provide an atmosphere that aligns with, to say the least, common decency for all of our children. This board is failing our children in a multitude of ways. Exposing them to inappropriate reading materials, feeding them subpar food lacking concern for their nutritional needs from students. For some, the most beneficial meals were served at school. For some, the only nourishment they received was at school. With blatant disregard, you canceled the Oaks Farms Con- With blatant disregard, you canceled the Oaks Farms contract, that has proven to be a terrible decision. Shame, we in the community are ashamed that we trusted this board to make proper decisions in the best interest of our future adults. For this task in which you have failed, I'm angry, and personally, I'm tired of being angry. I've had enough of the frustration I get from watching you look like dashboard bobbleheads every time a parent raises concern. Shame, I can't shake the shame that my tax dollars continually invest in this sinking ship. Floridians won't change, we don't want you using our children for your political motivated agenda. If you have an ounce of dignity, which we know a couple of you do not, tender your resignation immediately. One last thing, we are aware that you employ people to illegally spy on our social media. Some parents are concerned with retaliation tactics from this board. Well, I'm not one. I encourage you to look at my social media. Send me a friend request, I have much more colorful opinions of you that I can express on my platforms. Faith Family in Florida, I'm Smoking Joe.
Good evening. My name is Jamie Miller, and I am part of the Florida Citizens Alliance Kids First Team. I want to make sure it's understood that FLCA is nonpartisan, so in no way are our efforts a means to impose political beliefs on others. The mission of FLCA is to improve Florida's K-12 education by uniting and empowering teachers, students, and parents. With that said, I do have concerns about the challenge to instructional and/or media materials presentation from this afternoon. The use of the word "purient" on the First Amendment slide means to encourage excessive interest in sexual matters. So in order for material to be obscene and unprotected under the First Amendment, it must encourage excessive interest in sexual matters. I have concerns that most of the books in question are purient. Specifically, Toni Morrison's "The Bluest Eye" includes passages about the incest and child rape, and is on the American Library Association's annual list of most commonly banned books. There are currently 46 copies in eight of your high schools. On pages 84, 130, 147, 162, 166, and 181, there are graphic passages about sexual encounters with children. How does a book like this not encourage excessive interest in sexual matters? Our initiative isn't about book banning, though. This is about protecting children from being exposed to harmful materials that their parents are not informed about. Reminder, Florida law requires you to protect our children. That is not an opinion. This presentation was the first time that I heard about the access that I as a parent have to Launchpad. Why provide just an opt-out? This process should be opt-in only to protect children from being exposed to explicit materials without parental consent.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Amanda Evans, Support Personnel Associate for Lee County. I'm the president there. There are some concerns in the transportation with the negotiation being canceled so much. We need to settle these contracts because these drivers are leaving, we are overworked, underpaid, we feel unappreciated. There is only four months left of school. The board and superintendent needs to settle this contract, and let's move forward.
Kristi Divageli. So I had to think long and hard about what I was going to say when I got up here, because I, like so many others tonight, was going to read from those awful books. But then, two rows in front of me is this beautiful young girl, and I can't bring myself to do that. I'm sitting here and I'm staring at this handsome young man, and I can't bring myself to do that. So instead, I'm going to ask you again about this locksmith contract, because there has been consistent controversy pertaining to this contract, and millions of dollars have been spent on labor alone. I have a bid history invoice right here that has $35,000 per pivot table spreadsheet. There are one, two, three, four, five, five instances where we, me, my tax dollars, everyone's tax dollars in here, have paid $35,000 for a spreadsheet. This needs to be pulled and never brought up again. This contract should not be up for renewal. And this, we have five, Ms. Juvenelli pointed it out today, we have an entire locksmith department. Why are we paying someone millions of dollars for this? Please do something about this, and do something about the pornography that you are exposing my children to.
My name is Crystal Siskan, and this is kind of difficult for me to be here. The last time I gave public comment here, I was physically accosted in the parking lot and harassed on social media, but I wanted to come up and say, I worked for the Equity and Diversity Committee for three years on a nondiscrimination, anti-bullying policy for our students, including our LGBTQ gender nonconforming students, and this year in February, the governor took it away. And I'm watching the legislation in Tallahassee. And so I'm standing here saying to you ladies that I actually identify with Smoking Joe. I feel like we as a community didn't trust you to protect our students, and when these hard things happen with legislation, and it comes down, and you are navigating these laws without protections for some of our students, when you're discussing books, separate sexuality and sex when you make these decisions, and make sure that you are thinking of all students when you make these decisions, and try to navigate a safe space, use the best practices, because despite the laws, like another person here said, we still have to make these choices about what is right, and how do we do that? And you all ran for office to protect children. Don't forget, my children are still in school, whether the law protects them or not. Thank you.
That concludes public comment.
No, we still have one more.
I'm so sorry.
Good evening, board.
Good evening.
It has again come to my attention that district staff has been monitoring social media pages by utilizing staff in the Communications Department. The district is paying staff to infiltrate private Facebook groups, and they're telling those employees to pose as parents to shift the tone of the public discourse to make the school district look good. This is called malfeasance. This is an illegal use of government property. You also have policies in place that prohibit employees from engaging in this type of activity during work hours, yet you have a chief and directors leading the crusade on this one. On these emails, you will find the names of Lauren Stillwell, Irma Lancaster, Rob Spickler, and others. Even more interesting is that I have an email where Lauren Stillwell is telling an employee what to post in a private Facebook post called Moms of Southwest Florida. I'm certain that the 10,000-plus members of that group would like to know that they are being spied on by the Lee County School District. I have in my possession hundreds and hundreds of emails that prove that the district has been engaging in this type of unethical, illegal activity, that employees are coerced into doing the bidding of a rogue board member and chief, and I'm willing to share this with the community, because the community has a right to know what their local school board is engaging in. Why are these illegal activities continuing at the district? Because of one board member, and we all know who that board member is. This board member has protected the Communications Department, and they have worked in collusion together, even utilizing a vendor, Priority Marketing, to help her in her reelection. That can also be proved with my emails. The department's top administrative employees and Patrica utilize its resources to gain favors and benefits for their own self-serving interest. And even Dr. Savage has questioned Ms. Patrica's ability to effectively lead by sending me private text messages where he stated Chris always tries to validate she is right when she was completely wrong. She comes from a very biased and closed-minded position. She tries to corroborate her own position instead of the fact in the law.
Thank you.
Investigate public communications.
That concludes public comments.
Thank you. Well, I would just like to say thank you all for coming and sharing your point of views with us. We are here to hear what you have to say. I appreciate the comments regarding this young man who's sitting right here next to us, because this is certainly what it's about, as well as who we have in our audience as well this evening. We're here for all of our kids, we work to make sure that, we strive to make sure that all of our kids are taken care of, given them the tools that they need, and there's no one on this board that wants anybody to be hurt at all. So I just want to put that out there, because when I hear that as we're trying to hurt people, there's no one here that would ever think about that. So I just want to put that out there, and I really appreciate you all coming here and speaking. Next on the agenda is the approval of the action items in the agenda items under consent. The documents for action items listed under consent is made available to board members seven business days prior to the board meeting. We are expected to review all the materials, and we have an opportunity to speak with the superintendent with any questions we may have regarding the recommendations. Some of these items have also been briefed or workshopped with the board in advance of appearing on the action agenda. Board members, are there any items you wish to pull for discussion under unfinished business table items portion of the agenda? Ms. Fisher?
I have no pulls this evening, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Juvenelli?
L8.
Ms. Patrica?
No, thank you.
Gittens?
No, thank you.
Ms. Vaughn?
I have none.
Ms. Morgan?
I have none.
And I have none. Is our motion to approve the agenda consent items, action items, with the exception of pulled item L8? Ms. Morgan?
I move we approve this evening's consent agenda with the exception of L8.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher. It was motion by Ms. Morgan and seconded by Ms. Fisher, and please record your votes. Seven zero, motion carries. Okay, and before we move on to the unfinished business, Dr. Savage, before we ask you to read your recommendations, is there anyone in the audience that we have for?
Yes, Madam Chair, we have two administrative appointments today, but one of them is in attendance with us today. I'd like to recognize Ms. Barbara Sedano in Maintenance Services from Assistant Director to Director of Maintenance Services. Those are the only administrators in attendance for this evening.
Thank you so much, appreciate that, and I apologize that I missed that. So Dr. Savage, we have one pulled item to address, and if you would, please read your recommendation on the pulled item.
Yes, Madam Chair, so the item pulled is item L8. So the recommended action is to the approval of the estimated expenditure for ITN number N197369RC for locksmith installation services awarded to Big Lead Builders, Inc. and Integrity Builders of Southwest Florida in the amount of $150,000 for the third year of the base contract period of February 22nd, '22 through December 9th, 2022 pursuant to the same terms and conditions as previously approved by the board. Approval authorizes superintendent to execute all related documents.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt Dr. Savage's recommendation? Ms. Vaughn?
I move to accept Dr. Savage's recommendation.
Thank you. Do I have a second, please?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher. Okay, so we have Ms. Vaughn, motion from Ms. Vaughn and seconded by Ms. Fisher. Is there a discussion? And Ms. Juvenelli, you are on.
So thank you. And looking at the information provided today, which I had asked for, in 2019, with the locksmith contract was $48,000, and that includes materials and costs plus and labor. The second year in '20, it was $59,000, and that includes materials, costs, and labor. We have a maintenance department that has four certified locksmiths that could do our work, and I'm understanding that this contract is basically for emergency, but I don't think we need a $150,000 contract. I will not support this, and I understand the $10 million was to get the prior schools ready for Parkland, but that wasn't even all the schools, because Benita was already done, but that would be over $1,000 a door for actual, just actual maintenance, or, and I say maintenance, excuse me, installing the new locks on the doors, the red locks, and getting to be security-ready. That's a lot of money for just actual labor, not even the materials. We paid for the materials. So again, I won't support that this evening, because I believe this is actually a waste of our tax dollars. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments here? Ms. Morgan?
Correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Savage, but this isn't an approval of an expenditure, this is an approval of an expense allocation in the event the expenditure is required by some action, whether it's local or at the state level. So we're not approving an expenditure, per se.
Right, it's fair to say that. So essentially, this $150,000 is up to that amount, we do not anticipate using it at all. However, due to the installation of these that we did kind of go over earlier today, if we were to say, you know, need to make an emergency repair relative to one of these pieces that was installed during this upgrade project, which was pretty massive in its scale, of course, over a lot of using very specific hardware and so forth, which those dollar amounts we did give in earlier today, this would be the bid to use to accomplish those repairs. Some of them may even be reimbursed then, if the warranty would cover the parts or the labor, but these are the approved vendors that did the installation, and thusly would be the ones that we'd have to use to have qualified warranty repair. This is already utilizing existing budgeted funds within maintenance for anything that they would use as well.
Thank you.
A pleasure.
Okay, is there any other, Ms. Juvenelli?
So, and I understand that, I understand that it's for, if it's for emergency services when our four employees cannot get to it, but I would be more apt to agree to a $50,000 contract versus a $150,000 contract, or like 60 even, when it was in 2020. So there's the difference, that's $100,000 more than I think we should be having a contract for. I think we have to have some kind of control over the spending. I'd like to see that $100,000 go towards our employees that need it more desperately in the classroom. So I will not be supporting it regardless, I know that it's not an expenditure, but I guarantee you that it'll get spent, if it's there.
Ms. Patrica?
Is that? Is that a different pot of money? Like, that money can't be put in a classroom, am I correct? This is a capital expenditure, a different budget?
Yes, that's correct, and it would be, again, we may not spend a penny of it. The whole intention is really that we don't anticipate any additional work, because these projects were completed. However, if we did need to do it, and we have a number of things like this out there... However, if we did need to do it, and we have a number of things like this out there, that we have the flexibility then to use the already budgeted funds that we have in maintenance to, to accomplish this work, which then, again, could be reimbursed by, if these were to qualify for, for warranty work, which, because this was a very recent major capital project that we went through, that would be certainly something that I would expect if it were a faulty hardware, but it would have to qualify, and we wouldn't want a school to wait for that, that work to be accomplished.
Ms. Giovinelli?
Well, no, go ahead.
I'm sorry, Ms. Gittens.
Well, I, I mean, I have a question about, so it's money that we are budgeting just in case we need it, and just in case it's not covered by a warranty?
So if this is, this is an estimated expenditure, so we're not necessarily saying that we're going to, this isn't setting aside money for that purpose. It's authorizing us to use up to the amount with this particular set of vendors under this bid. The actual budgeted amount is actually a separate, complete, they use existing budgeted funds in maintenance to do it. So we're not asking for you to set aside $150,000. We're saying that we cannot exceed, we'd have to come back to the board if for some reason we were to exceed $150,000 with these vendors present to the, what's laid out within their bid.
But, but still, you mentioned earlier that if, if a specific, particular lock that cost a whole bunch of money breaks in, there's obviously some type of warranty or whatever on it. But if there's not, then we can do it and pay these people to fix it under this 150. So my point, I, I agree with Ms. Giovinelli, then, there's so many ifs in it. Makes me want to think then, why not have $50,000 just in case, and you still have to come back to the board if it's over $50,000? It just requires more oversight, which is what our job is. I mean, that's the way I see it. Maybe it's simplistic, but whatever.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes. So in, in reviewing the agenda to prepare for tonight and reading this part, and I knew there was discussion about the locksmith, but I read the public comment, which, if I may, invitation to negotiate N 197369RC is for locksmith installation services. This ITN was specifically designed for the installation of ADA code red locks upgraded 34 district facilities. These projects have been completed and no additional work is expected. The Maintenance Services Department keeps this ITN in place for emergency rekey projects should they occur. On December 10th, 2019, this ITN was awarded to Big Lead Builders, Incorporated and Integrity Builders of Southwest Florida for a three-year period, beginning December 10th, 2019, through December 9th, 2022, with renewal options for three additional one-year periods. This is typical of so many of our bids and contracts, and so upon the written agreement of the vendors and the district. So there would have to be another action before we would even spend the money. But we have money in different, if I'm understanding correctly, in different funds for that reason. It's, it's budgeted, but not necessarily ever expended. And that's when we get the budget reports, and we get, on capital things, we get, you know, money back. We often see that. So I, you know, I said I didn't have a problem with this, because it's done. And the money, this is not unusual for us to have money in reserve for potential follow-up issues. So I, I'm, I'm having a hard time understanding the big problem.
Ms. Giovinelli, then Ms. Gittens.
So in 20, in 20, when this contract was initiated, they spent, well, '19 and through '20, the, the, they spent $48,000 and then $59,000. So I just don't understand why we increased it to $150,000. That is my concern. I know that they changed the red locks, or upgraded to the red locks, and I understand that. And I spoke to many building supervisors who had to go in behind this company and fix it, fix the locks, and they, and also our maintenance department. They complained about it, and therefore I am not just going to be handing out the money like it's Halloween. So I, I just can't, I can't agree with that. And regardless of the fact that I know it's not being spent, but when you've, when, it's $10 million that they received already to not even do the locks correctly the first time, and we had to have somebody go in behind them, I can assure you they're going to need to do something.
Where's the evidence of that, if I may, to the chair?
Go, go ahead, Ms. Fisher.
There, the evidence is, I spoke to many supervisors, building supervisors. You, you could, I actually called Mr. Thompson. He'll tell you, they had to go fix it. In our own, our own maintenance department, they had to go fix it.
Fix what?
The locks that weren't done properly the first time by the, the vendor.
Where are, you know, where, where's the evidence? Where are they?
I'm telling you where the evidence is.
Okay.
It would be documented if that were the case.
It was.
Okay.
Ms. Gittens?
My question is, Ms. Fisher, thank you for reading that. But what it says to me, if I were the owner of one of these companies, and it says it was awarded $150,000 contract in case something happens, to me, that's just still a lot of money that's just sitting there. And how would I, if I have that company, how do I put that on my books? Do I put that I have potentially $150,000? How does that work? I mean, other, because otherwise, if you have a list of vendors for locks, and you've got, let's say, $50,000 set aside in case we need it, then you go to one of those people on that vendor list and get them to fix it, and you've got the money to do it. I, I don't understand why, and how did these two companies get to be the only ones? Why isn't there a vendor list? Has it been, have they been vetted that they are the preferred vendors? How, and it's just a lot of questions to me. And I understand what Ms. Fisher's saying, this is what we've always done. But a lot of times, what we've always done is not always the best to continue to do.
And Dr. Savage, could you please, yeah, could you respond to?
I'm trying to, I'll do the best I can. And again, I'm, the, the experts actually happen to be sitting in here too, that, that could help. But I, I'll tell you, from what, my best understanding of this is, these were the vendors that were awarded this initial bid and worked with specific hardware, which, again, the expenditures of which you, you have in the table that was sent earlier, it covered both the labor cost as well as the material cost. The material cost was 5.6 million, the labor cost is 4.5 million. And that when these were installed with this hardware, that part of the approach is that, but to be covered by warranty, they have to be installed by people who are recognized within this bid and with, for that particular hardware, so that you can't have a person who's not qualified to make the repair and then get reimbursed for that, that amount, is what I believe. That you're, essentially, these are the ones who were picked, and so they have to conduct the repairs. If they're qualified reimbursements, then they can, you can be compensated for that. If you have, like in our case, if we just sent our own locksmiths to do it, and they weren't qualified for that, we could be compensated for the hardware, but we wouldn't be reimbursed for the labor installation costs. Then essentially, we'd be taking from the staff that we currently have that are doing day-to-day repairs, which, again, the table reflects. The amount of day-to-day repairs they're doing all over the district. However, this is very specific to this capital project. This was an ADA code red. This was a major upgrade of locks at a very large number of sites. As you mentioned in the board item, 34 sites. If we were to rekey an entire building, again, it would take two, it would take our, our team of locksmiths working on that two to three sites an entire year to do that. So it's a huge volume of work that was done. So you're talking a lot of hardware, like they said, estimated over 15,000 doors. There's just a lot to this. Frederick, Barbara, I'm just looking if there's anything that I'm not getting correctly on this.
And Dr. Savage, if you, if you could, when you were speaking on that, so if the experts are not the ones who are doing it, the ones who installed it, and we do fix that, we would default on the warranty?
Well, I would say we would potentially lose our opportunity to have it as a qualified reimbursement, so that if we just do the repairs, because we, you know, for our timeliness. So this, what this does is prepares, so that if there is, in fact, a qualified reimbursement, that, that the vendor that's approved through this bid is able to do and conduct, that actually protects our investment, so that we could get that reimbursed. That's what this allows for, and that's only if it's needed. This is an estimated expenditure, so it's essentially allowing us to do it with already budgeted funds in the Maintenance Department for day-to-day locksmiths. So they would use those funds under this estimated expenditure to allow us to pay for that out of already budgeted funds, not funds that are set aside strictly for this project. These are funds that they use for locksmiths for buying hardware and for installation. That's what it essentially is. This just allows us to work with these two vendors, specific to these projects that were done, to close out that body of work. I, that's my best I can do to explain.
And I'm wondering if Mr. Ross, if he could, if there's something more that,
Anything I have not eliminated yet, or explained fully?
Explain, or, thank you. I don't think it's on. It's on. I think it is on.
Good evening. Frederick Ross, Executive Director, Operations. So to try to answer some of the questions, this was the result of an RFP process done several years ago. So this, there were vendors that were submitted, had, it was advertised, had vendors had the opportunity to submit. The value, valuation team, the whole procurement process was previously done, actually, when I was the Director of Procurement. In terms of the product, the projects, yes, again, $5 million from the spreadsheet. You can see how much was spent. That was the, you know, the red lock project, as Dr. Savage was saying. And now we have these locks in place. If there were any issues, the, the maintenance and building services, I mean, the supervisors, building supervisors are their first line of defense always. So they're looking at it, they're checking the hardware. If it's a issue that the vendor needs to be called, that's when the vendor is reached out to, especially after the project was done. If there were any issues, you know, they were to come and fix those. So if there was any reaching out to vendors afterwards to fix things, they were to come in and fix it. Again, this, this is just for, again, dropped down immensely to $150,000 just for additional, for emergency work that may come up. Again, we're in maintenance dealing with COVID and employees out too. So with a small locksmith staff, if something were to happen, we could easily be down. And this is, gives maintenance the ability to still respond to the school needs if something comes up in these areas.
Ms. Vaughn?
Actually, the explanation I've just heard from you and from Dr. Savage brings a question to my mind. If, in fact, there were to be an issue with installation, which I'm, I'm sure had to be warranted, under warranty, and there was an issue with installation, are you saying without the $150,000 that were, that were passing, that they wouldn't come back free to fix? That's what it sounded like from both of you to me, which has led me to question what I wasn't questioning before.
Yeah, so let me alleviate that. No warranty work should be, ever be paid for. If it's under warranty, they come out and fix it, free of charge.
So the installation is warranted as well?
The product, I'll have to check.
No, I'm not talking about, we bought the hardware. The installation under warranty, because I, I know I've seen in the past what was brought up here by a speaker, that at one point locksmiths from maintenance had to go fix upside-down and sideways locks. And what I'm asking is, should there be any other problems with installation? Is it not under warranty from these companies? That's, that's my question.
Good evening. My name is Barbara Sedano. So the answer to your question, yes. So the process is for us that if there is an issue with an existing lock, we have to follow protocols, which is contacting the supplier for the company. They actually send out a representative and further assess the situation to determine, is this a faulty product? Is it a faulty installation? However, prior to that, prior to getting to the supplier point, we do have to send our technicians, our locksmith, in order to be the first line of defense. And again, for multiple issues, just to, you know, further assess was it, what, what type of defect? And in their professional opinion, that's what, that becomes that first line of communication with that supplier. And then from there, that's where our warranty information, our warranty process will kick in. Does that answer your question?
Well, yeah, and that's how I suspected, that if we said, hey, your locks that we bought for, what was it, five and a half million or something like that, are, are faulty, I would assume that a representative would come out from the company and say, oh, no, whoever put this in didn't do it right. It should have been this, this, this.
Yes.
And at which case, these two vendors who installed it would be called out unless it's one of the locks that had to be reinstalled by our people. I'm sorry, but the explanation gave me pause about this whole thing, quite frankly.
Ms. Vaughn, are you clear on that one?
No, I totally understand, and I was hoping that what you would say would be, yes, the workmanship is also under warranty. And it didn't, it wasn't clear from what Dr. Savage said or Mr. Ross said. I, I wasn't clear whether the workmanship was also under warranty. I know the locks at that price that we paid have to be.
Yes, wait, so, so again, we have two lines of defense. Our, our locksmith within the department, as well as when they make that first line of communication.
Okay, well, that, no, it clarifies it. That's, that's what I need answered.
Thank you. Ms. Fisher, then Ms. Giovinelli.
Well, I was going to say, first of all, this is for the length of the contract, which is till December of this year, right? And, and can you clarify what Mrs. Giovinelli is talking about? That there were, our, our independent workers in the Maintenance Department had to go out and reinstall locks? Is that documented somewhere?
I don't have, I honestly, I would have to do a little bit of research on my end and see if that was, you know, to obtain additional information on that. What I would say is that whenever we were, when the project was undergoing, and there was any, you know, particular issues that were being experienced, yes, our staff still had to go to the school and, and further assess and see what was going on with the situation. If, if there was an issue that needed to be rectified by the company, they were responsible to come back and address those issues. Again, there may have been scenarios where perhaps, let's say, a teacher was not able to open a door, and that was an emergency situation, because we have to make sure students are able to enter those classrooms. So perhaps that might have been a situation where the locksmith from our department may have had to make that adjustment in order to gain entry into that space for that, for the staff and the students.
But that wouldn't mean, then, that the company wouldn't come back and make right of it?
Yes, they were still responsible for, from my understanding, they were still responsible to come back and follow up on, on the repairs that needed to be done there.
And Ms. Sedano, if that happened, would that be documented somewhere?
We have a work order system, so I'm not sure how much details were captured on there. I would have to do a little bit of research on that. I'm sorry, I don't have that information.
No, but, thank you.
Ms. Giovinelli?
So then, what was $60,000 spent on this contract for just, for the last seven months? That's what they have to do recently, because that's through present, from July of last year to, to today. They've, they've been paid $60,000, $58,000.
But then I'm looking.
So I was just curious what they've had to do.
Which, which one?
With the locks.
Okay, so, so there's two things that I combined on that document. Part of it was stockroom inventory costs. So if, if you're, if you have the spreadsheet in front of you, the first column is the Maintenance Services locksmith labor, which is our in-house internal staff that has reported time on repairs. The secondary column, we had combined any materials that we obtained from our stockroom and/or that we have purchased, you know, from an outside vendor. Let's say it was keys, because we needed to cut keys for particular spaces. So the dollar amount that you're seeing, the $58,000 in that last line, that's in-house labor, as well as potentially some cost for, for keys, maybe miscellaneous parts that we may have had to buy for other. have had to buy for other facilities. And if you've seen, zero dollars in contractor services.
Right, but that would, that would be our, that would be our cost. This is going to, that's $150,000 to them, not the, the, the materials and the cost. That materials, right? I mean, that's the $23,000 that you're talking about, that you broke down, right?
Yes, that would be either items that were obtained from our stockroom or items that were purchased from, from the supplier itself.
Yeah, but just to clarify, the vendors, okay, the contracted labor, the additional labor that we, that we have here, that's, that's referenced in the third column. So that's when these particular two vendors, their labor costs, their, that's, that's the cost that went to those specific firms. Is that correct?
Right, just, just that one year is the, is the only year. We haven't, we haven't utilized our services thereafter.
34 sites, that's the piece. As you saw, the cost of the locks, the hardware themselves, that's in the left, and a lot of this is our own in-house fees for our own, for the cost of the stockroom. It's just that one third column, that one small entry from 2021, which was the 34 sites, the additional bandwidth, the basically additional labor of these two firms to do the installations.
Yeah, the $4 million.
Correct, correct.
Four and a half million.
The 4.565 million for the 34 sites.
Okay.
Okay, is there any, Ms. Gittens?
Just one quick question. You, you mentioned that this had gone out to bid when you were in that position quite a while ago. And I keep bringing up the question, when we, you know, enter into this type of thing with a company, how often do we redo that procurement process? I mean, five, six years ago, a company may have been able to be the only ones to do this. And five or six years later, there may be other companies that would be willing and able to do it as well. So I don't know how often we look at putting it back out for bid. Did we just do that with them because they were involved the first time? And it kind of makes for a slightly inequitable bid situation if there's somebody else that may just have moved into town and opened a locksmith business.
Right. So the contract length is a three-year contract with three one-year renewals, and that is the typical best practice in government procurement for our contract lengths. It does, it gives the ability, you know, after that three-year term, if things are not going well, to put it out on the street, if, if things change in industry and, and, you know, maybe prices have gone down, or there's more, more people in the market, it does give that opportunity. I think Ms. Malley talked about the renewal process and how that is looked at when that does come around. But you also have to, you know, consider the flip side of it, redoing bids over and over a year, again, puts a lot of more stress on the, on staff, on, you know, getting these done. Each one of these efforts take evaluation teams with multiple meetings, vendors coming in, putting, doing multiple presentations, even to the vendors that has a cost to submitting. So you have to find that balance of, you know, what's the good contract length with, when is it good to go back out to the market? And then again, to Ms. Malley's point this morning, you know, prices are typically going up. So when you renew that bid and do it over again, your prices will likely be higher. So something to consider.
Okay, so do we have any other questions?
Call for the vote.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. This will be a hand vote. So, Dr. Savage, I'm just going to ask you to just restate your, restate this again, please.
All right. Yes, Madam Chair, this is for item L8, and the item is...
L8.
Subject, I'm sorry, I'm trying to specify. Approval of expenditure for ITN number N197369RC locksmith installation services.
Thank you. Okay, so I just heard that again, so I'm going to start with Ms. Morgan, please.
Aye.
Ms. Vaughn?
Nay.
Ms. Gittens?
Nay.
Ms. Patrica?
Yes, please.
Nay.
Ms. Giovinelli?
Aye.
Ms. Fisher?
An aye.
So four to three motion passes. Next on the agenda, we have, we have no public hearings, we have board member comments. And I'm going to start with Ms. Fisher.
Okay, well, I did give my comments this afternoon at the briefing meeting, so I won't reiterate that, but I just want to give another shout out and thank you to not only our district staff, our school staff, but our parents and our students.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher. And Ms. Giovinelli?
Yes, thank you. So congratulations, Ms. Sedino, I just wanted to say that personally. And then I really gave all my comments earlier as well. I do want to let the parents know that, and for those that spoke tonight, that we are hearing you. I echo some of the things that were said tonight regarding what the parents said about the books. I think that we have to look at some of these books that they're saying are not there, that are there, and we, and I'm putting that back on the superintendent, because I don't run the day-to-day business, the superintendent does. And so I'm going to ask that again. I had sent another email because I'd asked him to look into the books that were in question at another time. So that's where I will do that again, publicly again, saying that this belongs to curriculum and the superintendent. And I will stay on it, because we have to do what's best for kids, right? So, and then my other thing that came up tonight was regarding the communications allegations that were said tonight. I would request that the superintendent look into that. And because we can't have our staff spying on our community, that's their, that is not what our, the jobs are intended for. I don't think that we hire or have a job description of any such thing like that and that would spy on anyone, including the community. So I have to ask the superintendent to look into that as well. And I, I believe there should be an investigation on it because the allegations were very strong. That's it, thank you, I'm sorry.
Thank you. I was waiting for you to...
I'm sorry, it's been a long day.
Thank you. Ms. Patrica?
So I typically don't respond to public comment because I don't think it's appropriate. I like to give my reports in the afternoon, and I like the chair to address the public. But tonight's going to be a little bit different, because week after week after week, month after month after month, I hear the public come and question our teachers and their professionalism. And I've had it, I have had it. I have four children who have been in our schools for 10 years. That's four children in different classrooms with different teachers for 10 years. One time, one time, I had a student, I had a teacher who was teaching from a perspective...
Can we please?
What? Miss... One time...
I'm sorry, please no speaking. Go ahead, Ms. Patrica.
One time, I had a teacher, one of my children's teachers was teaching from a perspective, was teaching an ideology. My child was old enough to address that issue on, on my child's own behalf, because my child was old enough to do it, address it with the teacher, when it didn't get where it was supposed to go with the teacher, went to the principal, and it was taken care of. One time in 10 years with four kids. When we talk about morality being taught in books, we're questioning the science of teaching, we're questioning the professionalism of teachers. When we talk about schools teaching worldviews, schools don't teach, teachers do. Teachers are professionals. There is an art and there is a science to teaching. I trust our teachers. It can be indoctrination when we give children access to books. Yeah, it could potentially be if you don't trust teachers. I trust teachers. I trust our teachers. Tobacco, alcohol, and drugs are not constitutionally protected. Books are. The First Amendment is. We have a responsibility to protect every child in this district, not push the morality of the views of a segment of parents who apparently want the schools to do it for them. The only real question I have here is the accuracy of public records requests, Dr. Savage. I don't know, I mean, I heard some discussion in public comment tonight about various answers being received through, through public records requests. If you could just look into that and provide some kind of a report to the board, assuming it takes less than an hour and a half, I'd really appreciate that. The last thing I'll say is, you know, it's okay to have these books in a public library, but not in public school media centers? What are media centers except public libraries? Like, I don't understand any of this. It makes no sense to me. I am a conservative. I want to have a say in my children's education, and the system we have set up in this district right now protects my rights, period. I'm sorry, I don't, I don't usually respond to public comment, but sexual training in our schools, I mean, it's gotten to the point where it's absurd. Those are my comments for this evening. Oh, wait a minute, Barbara, congratulations. And you did a fantastic job being put, you know, feet on the fire very first night. I'm really, really, really happy for you, and I'm, I don't know if I should say this out loud, but I'm really happy, though, a woman is in charge of maintenance. That makes me really happy. And you deserve it. You're not there because you're a woman, you just happen to be a woman who's incredibly qualified. And the way you present to the board always gives me significant confidence in what's happening down there, and I trust you. So, thank you. Those are my comments.
Thank you, Ms. Patrica. Ms. Gittens?
Yeah, that's still my name. I normally write on my paper before I speak, let the words in my mouth, so that I'm reminded to be mindful of what I say and how I say it. Tonight, I'm going to say it out loud, let the words in my mouth. First, I do have to respond to Ms. Patrica. I, I did not get that impression from the audience tonight or any other night. What I heard them say, what I have heard them say when I've spoken to them one-on-one is not attacking teachers. I, I just, I don't know where that came from, because they have attacked us, they have attacked the superintendent, they have attacked academic services, the people that have the books there. I recall one thing that Pastor Roper said was, or someone mentioned, that if kids were able to slip into the library and read these things, that was not accusing our teachers per se. Now, do our teachers human beings? Yes, they are. And do sometimes maybe their thoughts and feelings that are deep down inside bubble out into something they will say in the way they say it? Yes. And can kids like, smart like this one, figure out, oh, she doesn't like so-and-so? Okay? Yes, it can slip out. But are teachers sitting, standing up there, you shouldn't like so-and-so, you shouldn't do that? It's not happening. And I did not hear these people say, our teachers are terrible. I heard them say that the books that, that we have, somehow we need to make sure they're not there. If they're in the public library and the parent lets their child go there, that, that's between the parents and the public library. But keeping the materials out of their availability while they are with us for seven and a half hours is what I heard. Anyway, I have some other things that I want to say. There is still confusion. I've heard two or three people speak about this, and I've heard it outside of this building. People are still confused about that $35 million in food storage. And I have asked and asked to have it explained clearly and carefully and simply and visually so people understand what we are and are not doing. I'm kind of interspersing good and bad in here, but Do the Right Thing ceremony is always one of my favorites, and the little kids are so cute. I sat over on that side, and there was this little guy who was about this tall, so we sat him up on a stool that's over there, and, and he just had a blast, just, you know, he was squirming around and waving to everybody that he could, and the kids were just awesome. So I want to take this, two seconds to say to parents, thank you to your parents that are out there. I thank them every time when I do, do the right thing, because they wouldn't be sitting up here in our seats if it weren't for the parents that taught them the good things that they do. So I want to say that. And thank you to Sheriff Carmine and that program, it's a great program as well. I want to defend the agenda review. And the agenda review was something that I had suggested back in 2019 when I was the chair, because of just what happened here today, in this action meeting, and us going over something that was on the action agenda. And if you go back, ever since we started it, there has been much less of the discussion at the action meetings. There has been action meetings, and we present it, and everybody says, yeah, we've already talked about it, we've already got that out there. There are times that, of course, a board member will say, no, I'm just not going to vote on it, that's fine. But if you go back a couple of years back, we'd still be going about polls on the agenda, and you all know and understand that. The purpose of the agenda review was that there would be no surprises for anybody, for us, the superintendent, for staff. They get the questions. It's not like we're calling them up, okay, stand here, and we're going to hit you with a question. You have the question before you come up there. We still hit you a little bit, but, no. But you know what it is we're asking, you have an opportunity to come up with the answers. Just like we're not beating up on teachers, we're not beating up on staff. We, in my opinion, what I am trying to do with that agenda review is to ask questions that I don't understand, and I know you don't. I know you don't, because the answers are not out there. At the beginning of every agenda vote, the chair says, we are responsible to read every line of the agenda, and we're supposed to know what we're voting on. Well, if I read the line in the agenda and I have a question about it, I'm going to ask the question. I mean, it goes back to, it's my lane to ask questions. And sometimes when I ask them, it is for the sake of not you all up here, but for them out there who make sure that we are up here. I think that, and I have seen this happen over the last year or so, that many of my coworkers up here have decided, we can make it all go away, we'll just stop asking questions in the agenda review, and that's what they have done. There are two of us that ask questions, and the other ones, I guess you guys have more insight on stuff than I do, because there are things I don't understand, and I'm going to ask questions. So if there's going to be a vote to get rid of agenda review, that's fine. We'll go back to still asking questions. You cannot stop me from asking questions. If anyone else wants to participate in that, and it's interesting that when it first started, there were a plethora, pages of questions. All of a sudden, it stopped, and it's just me mostly. And thank you, Ms. Giovinelli, for yours. So I wanted to put that out there. I did not pull L10 tonight, and that was about Riverdale. I discussed it today, thanks to the agenda review, and got some answers back. But the bottom line to that whole project to me is, Riverdale High School, as old as it is, has needed repairs and needed fixing for years and years and years. And now we have put ourselves, due to lack of planning, at a point where... And now we have put ourselves, due to lack of planning, at a point where now we have to spend the money now to get it done? Do you realize that five years ago, when it was still old and in need of repair, if we had done what we should have done, we would have saved money? I'm done with that one. Someone mentioned to me about paying our teachers, and that they had brought up a suggestion at one point, and I'm just throwing this out there, I don't know where it is, and maybe we can look into it. But the fact that in the beginning of the year, we budget for 100% staffing in our schools, and if we do not staff 100%, let's say we staff 70%, the difference in that money that was budgeted for that staff, for that other 30%, goes into reserve. I would like to ask, why does that, does that still happen? And if that's money that's sitting there that goes into reserves, why not give it to the 70% that work their behinds off because we didn't have the other 30%? Just a suggestion, throwing it out there. I want to thank everyone from RSM and the audit committee members. Everyone worked really, really hard and diligently to get us back into compliance with the audience, I mean, with the audience, with the audit, and we are very, very close to doing that, and thank you to everyone for agreeing. A couple of things about classes. I visited Eastlake County High School, Mr. Thomas Pounds' finance class. And for many of you that sit in the audience or that stand up there and say, we're not teaching basics, we're not teaching kids stuff they need to know, you need to visit Mr. Pounds' finance class. When kids are sitting there figuring out, not if they're going to college, but really can they afford it, and he says to them, you're calculating this as if you don't have a parent with a bankroll that's going to help you. And they go into all the details and stuff. So know for a fact, our kids are learning things that they will need beyond our walls. Thank you, Mr. Pounds, and your class. I want to thank FGCU, their multicultural group invited me on Saturday to speak at their phenomenal 3D symposium. Our world is gonna be in good hands, adults, trust me, there's some young people out there that are gonna kill it. I visited Pace School for Girls, and I thank you for that, they were just wonderful and happy and participative, and I asked one of the leaders when I was there, I said, do you ever have trouble with girls that really don't want to leave? Because it is such a microcosm of what all students would want, small classes, caring teachers, just wonderful environment. And so hats off to all of you at Pace. Now, I keep talking about the crisis that we have with teachers and needing people to sub, and I brought it up again today about the part-time sub. I really hope we get that off the ground sooner than later and let people start doing it. I still have people asking me, when can I do that? And to put my hat in there first, I subbed last week three middle school classes, okay? So you can clap for me later. Middle school. No, you know, I'm just teasing, I'm just teasing. The kids were awesome, though. I was at Varsity Lakes Middle and at Hans Marsh, and the kids were really great. It was Valentine's Day, so we shared chocolates, I actually got some hearts, thank you. And in two of the classes, we talked about infer, and the statement I want to make is, we need to not infer that it's okay not to move quickly and help our teachers, we need to get busy and try to help those teachers. Every minute we waste, we lose another teacher, or two, or three, or four. And if we can get them help, if we can talk about the wonderful things we are doing that we talked about this afternoon, that's going to help as well. But the three classes that I covered were three teachers that did not have to give up their planning and could do their work, and it's not that I'm so great, but many of you can do that, to be there to help those students and to help those teachers. I had teachers that came by and said, oh, thank you for doing that. Just because they didn't have to, if you've ever taught, and you'll know this, especially if you have a first-period class, you hide, because first period is when people are laid or whatever, and you know that phone's gonna ring. Ms. Gittens, can you please cover this class? Okay. So, please, let's get at least some part-time subs, something to do that. My last thing is, it's Black History Month, this is the last time that we will be convened during Black History Month, and why do we honor those who've gone before and sacrificed and marched and prayed, and prayed my way to sit here? We honor them because they did that. I want to thank the Lee County voters that elected me to do this job. I fought a good fight, I've kept the faith, but I've not finished my course. Many of us think that, when we think about Rosa Parks, that just her singularly, you know, not giving up her seat on the bus, but it's so much bigger than that. All the hundreds of people that galvanized together and boycotted those buses. They helped each other, they walked together, they gave each other rides, but they did it for a cause, and they did it for a purpose of what is right. So I want to leave you with my thought, like Martin Luther King gave his, you know, my four little children. Well, I pray that one day, the thought of being the first African American to do anything is so far out that nobody even raises an eyebrow, because there will be so many firsts, second's, third's, fourth, fifth's, on and to ad infinitum, and that is the norm, when we're all accepted, appreciated, and welcomed. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gittens. Ms. Vaughn, please.
Yeah, I was gonna say, Ms. Gittens looks sharp tonight in her, in her, in her outfit. Can I, can I say outfit? In what you're wearing tonight? No, it looks, I wish I could carry off something like that, because then...
I got you.
Well, I've thought about it at times, but then I thought it would just seem disingenuous to show up.
Do you understand, there's people that look like you in Africa, too, right?
I, I know, I know, I know. Anyway, I was gonna mention, yeah, it is the end of, nearing the end, it's amazing, I know February's a little shorter than the other months, but they all fly by, and I'm not even sure when, a couple, I think a couple weeks ago, and I don't think I mentioned it, one of our own, the director of our diversity and equity gave, and Ms. Jordan was there, too, gave an awesome, awesome presentation about Lee County and the history of segregation, desegregation, and it's, I was, I was happy for it, I felt like, not really the Cliffs version, because he supplied so much information, but it makes me want to go and read some more of those books about the history of Fort Myers, because this Jersey girl did not grow up in, in that kind of environment. And so, you know, when I first moved here over 16 years ago, hearing the history of Lee County School District was frankly kind of shocking to me. But, but anyway, moving on from, from that, regretfully, because of family circumstance, I could not attend this afternoon's briefing. I had just a limited amount of time after I returned home to watch, listen to a little bit of it. I noted that Ms. Patrica said she was sorry that I wasn't there for the presentation this afternoon, and I still have to hear the rest of the board comments, because I had to leave the house, and I was watching on a, on something that, on my device that did not have Wi-Fi or 5G or whatever. But I did hear the entire presentation by Academic Services, and my opinion is that this school district is bending over backward, is doing a more than adequate job in giving parents choices and options. And, you know, I was also interested in the statute that was presented, because my personal, personal feeling is that we have the Parents' Bill of Rights, and it's really the parents that govern their children, the parents are the guardians. I know that there are obviously citizens in this county and actually throughout Florida and across the U.S. that want to take that role, and we had a few people that said, you know, if we're really looking at parental rights, to me, that, that's something that's always been in my life as a teacher. Before I moved here, I taught for 24 years in the state of Texas. Now, if you want a clone of Florida in terms of education and policy and that sort of thing, there we go, Texas, and I did experience many instances of book challenges, but I will have to say that the nature of the challenges were a little bit different than the nature of the challenges here. Anybody that's been to this meeting, you know how progressive I am, and I can tell you, then, all my years of teaching, my students never knew what my political feelings were. They never knew. I was a literature teacher, I taught what I felt was the theme, the lesson, the morality of the particular book. One of my favorites to teach to seniors was Orwell's 1984, and I see so many parallels in today's world with that book, but I taught it from Orwell's point of view. Now, as a child of the 1950s in elementary school, yeah, I'm pretty old, watching TV shows like Rogers and those things in black and white, I appreciate the idea of childhood innocence. It would be wonderful if we could have that kind of innocence, but we don't live in that world anymore. We are in the 21st century, 22 years into this century, and for those of you who've never actually walked through, doesn't even, I was mostly in high school, but you might be surprised at what the kids know, and you might be surprised at what the kids feel. And a lot of the things that I hear from some of the constituents that are regulars here at the meeting are, they, you all have the absolute right for your children to say, no, I don't want this book taught to my child, or no, I want to opt my child out of the sexuality portion of health education. No, I don't want my child to hear, what was it, Worm Loves Worm? But I want all of you to consider something. I want you to consider the LGBTQ community. Consider the fact that some of the children in those primary grades might have a transgender parent, yes, a transgender parent. I actually know a couple people, several, that are transgender and have children. Those children in that classroom might have two moms or two dads. What about those kids? They don't count? When it comes to sexuality, maybe you might want to also think about children that live in environments that aren't protecting them in any way. Children who are in the foster care system because they've been removed from abusive or drug-addicted parents, or they've been trafficked, or they've been neglected but unfortunately are still in that home situation. Situations that you read, that I listened to out loud from Toni Morrison's books, and I'm not saying that I would choose to teach those books, but those situations brought forward very real issues for the children that she was representing, the incest, the abuse that those children endured. If you want to read a book, and this is kind of blending two things together, Black History Month and things that we squirm about, try reading The Narrative of the Life of Frederick Douglass. Read that, read about the sexuality. Now Frederick Douglass, when he wrote that book, I think it was in the 1830s, might have been the 1850s, somewhere in that, well before the Civil War, he didn't use, he didn't use the word fuck, but that's what he was talking about. He didn't use some of the words that you find in Toni Morrison's book, but he was talking about it, because what he portrays about slavery is brutal. Just, just saying. And I take a little bit of exception to what my board colleague said, because I do hear people slamming teachers indirectly. You may say I love teachers and all, and yet, I've heard people say, and I've heard, and I've seen in the legislature, wanting to put cameras in the classrooms. I've actually had constituents write to me, we own these schools, and we have, well, I don't have time to go into why, that's a terrible idea. I want to go into the school anytime and make sure, and I don't want to notify the teacher, I want to make sure that teacher isn't teaching anything bad to my kids. Yeah, I've heard that. I want to make sure that the teachers don't, aren't indoctrinating my child, because as Mr. Roper pointed out, one book can be read in two different ways, can't it? And who's directing that? If it is a book taught in the classroom, it would be the teacher. I trust the teachers, I trust their judgments, I trust them. And if you have any thought that they are not trustworthy... And if you have any thought that they are not trustworthy, that they are not underpaid, that they are disrespected by a wide variety of people in the community, in our legislature, then you better take a look at what's being done. You better take a look because if you don't look fast, you might miss public education going right down the toilet. I saw wonderful teachers and many of the board members were at the celebration of the Golden Apple finalists this past week, put on by the wonderful Foundation for Lee County Public Schools. It was a great publication and I'm, a great, not publication, it was a great celebration. And I'm going to end with a little happy note from me on why the experiences of teaching are priceless, but you still need money to pay your bills. The finalists came up to me and said, you probably don't remember me, but I was a student in your AP class when I was a junior. And this goes back, gosh, probably at least 13 years ago. And her last name, she married to her last name, and I kind of remembered a little. And this wonderful teacher said, Ms. Vaughn, I just want to thank you. I want to thank you because you are hard on us in that class, but what you taught us about writing, what you taught me about writing has served me through my career, through college, through my career, so thank you. And any of you who've taught and you've had your kids come up and say anything, even, I mean, I have kids from Texas that are in their 50s that I still hear from. It's priceless, but they still need money to pay the bills, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Vaughn. I'm going to pass.
What?
I'm going to pass.
Guess whose turn it is? It is your, oh, she's passing, otherwise she would, if she had something to say, she would definitely say it. She's passing, so now, but that's, thank you for getting over. He's worried about you speaking. So guess whose turn it is? It's your turn.
It's my turn?
Yes.
Okay.
Can you please say, say hi to your mom, right?
I'm going to say, I'm going to say hi to mom. Hi, mom. But I don't remember your name, but you did a wonderful, wonderful job. What's your name?
Bryce Davis.
Can't have conversations with people.
Oh, okay. Well, you did a wonderful job, just to say the least. And congratulations on your promotion, especially as a woman. My mother, she works at Home Depot. She's been there for 35 years. And she works at the ProDess, and she's a woman, and she has to deal with contractors every day. So, so you can only imagine how that goes. And you didn't get promoted because you're a woman. You got promoted because you know what you're doing. And, and she said that I have a lot of time. I usually get like three minutes when I come here, so I have a lot to talk about.
So we're going to give you five minutes. How's that?
Okay. Well, I am, I am Carson Branch, a senior at Cypress Lake High School. I'm graduating soon, and I will be sad to leave the Lee County School District. Elementary and middle school were rough times for me, but luckily enough, I had a great, I have a great support system from administrators and teachers, from administrators and teachers. I am very thankful for the administrators and teachers at Cypress Lake High School, especially the principal, Mrs. Rolls, and Mrs. Vickers. They are family members to me. She is not only, she's not only the principal, she's family. I have worked hand in hand with administration and staff on projects to improve the school. One of my biggest goals was to re-renovate the bathrooms. And thank you, thank you, thank you to the school board for helping me out on that. With the administration projects, improve school board, my goal, my goal is fulfilled. Thank you to them. Another project I am working on is with the baseball coach, Tony Ficaro, and the building of a new shed for, for equipment storage. Thank you to our local Home Depot for helping us out and also donating concrete in the past. I am also putting up new paintings around the school with the help of a wonderful staff member, Ms. Newton, who is also an alumni at Cypress Lake High School. But I must say, the most important teachers in my life, the most important teachers in my life who have prepared me for my, for life, my mother.
Oh, you're good.
Oh, my goodness.
You're good, you're good. You can do it. Deep breath. You can do it.
Is my amazing mother and my idol, my granddad. My mother is more than a mother. She is, she is a life teacher. She has guided me through tough situations. My granddad has never turned his back on me. And my great-great-grandmother is the number one person in my whole heart. She's my neighbor, by the way. And I'm honestly not even going to read this off. I just want to say thank you to all the Lee County School District staff, from paras to bus drivers, to security guards, to principals who stay after school at, at after-school activities. I mean, it is so hard and, and it's so hard. It is, it's so, so difficult. I mean, and thank you to the subs. I have a sub that I love the most, Mr. Butler. He's the tallest guy in the world, but he's always like a ball of joy whenever you meet him. I mean, he runs into every classroom that they need help in, and he's always there. He's always there. And I want to give a special thank you to Ms. Vickers. Ms. Vickers is truly another mother to me. We hang out, I mean, this might not be legal or whatever, but, 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 we hang out out of school. And she has, I've came to her for suggestions many of times. I don't know what to do here. She actually wrote this for me. And she's the best. And I really am, really am thankful for Cypress Lake High School, and I hope to, Mr. Savage, I hope to take a tour with you of Cypress Lake High School as we were talking about before. And I'm just so thankful for y'all. And with Riverdale, you were talking about Riverdale. One of my best friends, Mariah Gillum, who's on the volley, who's on the softball team, she just transferred there. And we were talking about Riverdale because we were talking about the bathrooms at Cypress Lake High School, and Riverdale needs a big renovation. So, so also, I have a friend that went to Fort Myers High School the other day for the parade, me and my mom attended, and she went to go and use the restrooms, and they also need to be re-renovated also. So I would love if, if we could set up a system to where we go around to all schools, if it hasn't already been set up, to where we go around to all schools and we check what they need, building-wise, especially the older schools, because those are our most prized possession ones. And I want to thank y'all so much for allowing me to come up here. And I also want to say something to the public. Y'all do not realize what these ladies and gentlemen go through up here. Y'all came, I mean, I've been to a lot of past ones, and y'all have talked about books. And I understand that is a, it is a big issue, it's a big topic, but they are doing all they can do. They are doing, they're putting their best foot forward. And you also have to realize, it's not like these folks up here have went up and physically put a book in the library. I'm just saying. And I want to thank y'all for having me up here, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
That is hope for the future right there.
And I got to follow that? No, just kidding. That's too much right there. I, I just, Carson, just really thank you so much for being here. Really appreciate you and your words. You got me choked up still. And mom, thank you for raising a great son. I'm just saying. But I've said all my comments today. I just, it's been a meeting. You can never speak in front of me again. I'm done, I'm done with you. I'm done. But, yeah, so I did mine this morning, so I am, this afternoon, so I'm going to go to Mr. DePree Bruno. Do you have any comments?
I just want clarification on the letter that was approved under Board Office Item F2. Is that going to be signed by all of the board members, or is it going to be signed by the chair?
So the, do we have comments on that? This is regarding the Ms. Fisher.
I think we should all sign it.
As a team?
Yeah, agree.
Okay, can I get a?
But the let, may I? Sorry. The letter that was approved was approved as signed by Debbie Jordan, Board Chair. It wasn't approved as being signed with individual names, and I specifically asked for that because I know that there are some board members who don't want their name on the letter, and I think we should respect that. Just as a team, we should respect that. It has the same effect either way. We're just not putting individual members of the team in a difficult situation. So it's already been approved as signed by the chair.
May I, please? Ms. Gittens. I spoke with the attorney this afternoon prior to it being approved, and that was one of the things that I had brought up to, instead of having it just from Debbie Jordan, to have it from the school board of Lee County. To me, that has more clout than, and no offense to you as the chair, but.
I'm with you there.
If we're trying to make a statement that this is what we believe, then why not say it's from the board of the, you know, school board of Lee County? And I did bring that up prior to the, to the vote.
And I'm sorry, I didn't realize. I thought it was blanks. Ms. Patrica?
But if the letter goes out on board letterhead and it's signed by the board chair, that says it's from the school board, does it not?
No.
Attorney DePree Bruno, does it not?
It does say it's from the board chair. I'm looking at the letter. I did not realize that the one that was uploaded had Debbie Jordan, Board Chair's name on it because the original draft did not have that on there.
Did not have it, correct.
And that's the one that I thought was going to be uploaded, but this is still a draft and it's completely up to the board as to how they want this signed. The content of the letter is what is important, that has been approved by the board. As to who signs it, that's what I want direction from the board.
Thank you. So if I may again, if for the, Ms. Gittens, did you have another question?
Well, I just want to say one last thing about it, that if it's signed Debbie Jordan and then our signatures are around it, we're saying we approve what Debbie Jordan says rather than saying that what we as a board say.
Right. So this is why we're saying, can we approve it from, it being from the entire board with everybody's signatures on it? Can we have thumbs up for everybody's signatures on it? Okay, so we have, Ms. DePree Bruno, you have, it's five to, one to live with it and one no.
Thank you. And then the only other question I had is, who is this letter going to be sent to? Do we want it to be sent to the, I believe it's the President of the Senate, but I'll double-check the title, or do we want it just sent to the local delegation, local senators? Our local senators? And you want this addressed?
Ms. Patrica?
I would say to the Senate and copy our local delegation, both House and Senate.
Both House and Senate, okay.
Does everybody agree with that?
Yes.
So that they all have it?
Sounds good.
Consensus, consensus, please.
Consensus, please.
Thank you.
And six to one.
I'm trying to clap.
Okay, is, was that it? Mr. DePree Bruno?
Yes, thank you.
Dr. Savage?
Yes, ma'am, chair, just a few comments. First, you know, hearing, you know, when I get to hear from Carson, and then again, I think of Presley last time, and when I watched our North Fort Myers group presenting and doing their, their pre-music beforehand, it gives you such tremendous hope for, for all of us, you know, to know that we're, we're in your hands. You are the leaders of tomorrow. You're the ones dedicated, the kind, thoughtful words that you shared. I think Presley even sent an email after, you know, it had, so it just, this is the type of thing that really inspires me. I'll say, you know, I was a French horn player, too. I didn't want to do that. I was forced. That was the only instrument that they needed someone to do. And I watched the French horn player and the red knights here ahead of them. I thought, boy, he is way better than I ever was. But also was thrilled that you mentioned John Butler, because that is the name of Mr. Butler, that substitute that you're talking about. He's famous. He's a great sub, and he's been in that Cypress corridor for years and years and years. And he is extremely tall. That is very true. But his height is only exceeded by his heart. He is a kind person. He's beloved, you know, to see a substitute in this. We don't talk about subs very often, but for you to shine a light on our substitute teachers, especially right now, to know that John Butler is out there, and I haven't seen him in over 10 years, but I still remember him because he was the most, one of the most active subs in our system and just a wonderful man. So thank you for shining a light on him. You know, just the locks project, one, I know it was a lot of conversation today. I don't want to delegitimize any of the concerns that were brought up. There certainly were lots of issues during a major, major capital project like that. I remember seeing photos of kind of upside-down locks and some of those issues. So I don't want to sweep that under the rug and make it appear that none of those things happened. I would just say it's a massive, massive project, and that's why I feel very confident that now we are in very good hands with Ms. Sedano. I know she probably had to help clean up a lot of that work at the time. Just looking forward to the continued investment in making maintenance the best it can be. So congratulations on your appointment. Also, just on the books, we certainly will be following up with Academic Services. I understand there, just, I have had a lot of texts going back and forth with them while they're sitting in the audience, as well as through the presentation they did today, which I thought was excellent. One of the big highlights, I want to make sure parents who didn't watch that earlier, that earlier briefing, was that there is the ability to put alerts on your, in the Destiny system. So if you're a parent who's been alarmed by any of what you've heard so far, you don't want to go through the process of actually challenging a particular book, but you're just worried and concerned, then you have that ability actually at the ready. And if you're not familiar with the technology, feel free to call your child's school. They'll be happy to assist, assist you, whether it's your teacher, if you're elementary, or administration at the schools. That's just something that is a mechanism that's already in place. We'll continue to look at all options to ensure that we can make it the best it can be. At the same time, the accuracy of the public records request, we'll certainly look into that because that, that is very concerning if the same person's receiving multiple conflicting information. We'll look into that. The $35 million in the food storage, just had, asked to have that resent to the board, I think back at the end of January, we had a visual, data visualization to try to make it a picture worth 1,000 words, but that's, that's being sent. Let us know if that meets your needs, if it's easy to use it as a talking piece or not. Had a lot of conversations coming forward to talk about paying people more, settle the contract, I think was the specific words, board super, pay the, settle the contract. I just want to remind everyone who watches, you know, that's the board, I'm not involved in the bargaining directly, there's a bargaining team that does it. The board is not involved in bargaining directly. So, you know, there are, that, that is a process, an interest-based process, which we've used for years and years and years. The teams come together, they're very transparent about what their interests are. Those are recorded meetings. You have the opportunity to view them. I encourage you to do it if there's ever any question of how that works and what's being debated. It's a long process, but it can be very worthwhile to study that. Also, something I failed to mention a couple weeks ago, FGCU has a, really a first of its kind here locally, are international fellows. So these are, these are people who are educators or studying to be educators from other countries, and every continent is represented other than Australia and then Antarctica. These are, these are students who are international students who are here at FGCU and are now working with two of our schools, Three Oaks Middle and Dunbar High, and they each have teachers assigned to them in ELA and the math field. So this is really an exciting partnership, and the first time, it's a huge grant that FGCU worked on to get these students here. And it's just a wonderful opportunity for us to get these international students and their broad worldviews coming from all over, and it's amazing, the different countries that are represented, but they're working with our kids. They're exposing our students. Then not only are they getting to see an American way of life and our American school system and pushing into our systems, and, but, but they're really able to share some of what they've learned and their, their students at FGCU at the same time. So it's an amazing program. It's going on right now as we speak, and a pretty exciting thing that I did not mention when it began. The other thing I just wanted to mention was that we have, we have the distinction of somebody who's really amazing, Mr. Jared Eadie, who was just recently acknowledged as the Person of the Year for Lee Pitts Live. And this is fun because, you know, Jared has constantly recognized me. He's the 40 under 40, this is Lee Pitts Live, he's the Person of the Year.
Ms. Gittens as well.
And Ms. Gittens as well, yes. Specifically first, to highlight Mr. Eadie, that the amazing thing about Mr. Eadie on this, as far as our particular community, is he has had a, just a tremendous career of service in our community, and as a young person, he's so deeply involved. So for him to be leading the work right now during such a difficult time as our Director of Diversity and Inclusion, we're just so thrilled to have his leadership. And again, I think Ms. Gittens needs no interest. And again, I think Ms. Gittens needs no introduction. Here she is at our board, just another person mentioned, and just the timeliness of that piece, just to highlight our recipients here at the table. And then last but not least, what the work is all about. The teachers at the Golden Apple finalists, I had the chance on Friday, was not feeling well, just like still a little under the weather, had my mask on, I didn't know how long I'd make it. But the most, the best part about working with all these teachers was that some of them, they were just so, you would never know a pandemic had happened, you'd never know some of the conditions that some of them had gone through. And we had community leaders and business owners, all these folks out there to support them. So it's really an opportunity for all of our community leaders to kind of highlight that the teachers are the focus. The teachers and the work they're doing with their kids every day really is such a powerful focus for us to be thinking about. And a lot of those teachers were willing to share with me the ugly realities of what they've dealt with. So I really appreciated that candor, that some of them were just willing to do it, so much so that I closed it down. I was there, I wasn't feeling well, but I lasted the entire evening, and I only got into the parking lot and still had lots of tips on how we can better serve. So thank you to those teachers for your service. Thank you for being candid and honest and helping to push us to be the best we can be. And thank you to everyone in the community who's constantly pushing us to be the best we can be. And those are my comments for this evening.
Thank you. And I did forget something. I wanted to congratulate Ms. Barbour. I'm really happy for you, and I know you're gonna do a great job. And I also wanted to thank the young man, and I know you spoke on him. It's the first time we've ever had someone stay the whole time. They usually do the presentation and they're gone. So thank you so much for being here, and thank you for, and doing that for us.
I like wanted to whisper to the parents, you can leave with him if you want to, but they stayed the whole time.
We really do appreciate it and thank you for that. And I know you're going into the service they stead, so best wishes for you. Thank you. The next scheduled meeting of the board will be a workshop on March 7th at noon, briefing on March 8th at 1:00, followed by an action meeting at 6:00 PM. At this point, having no further business to come before this body, see no objection, this meeting is adjourned, and the time is 9:03. Have a good evening.